Okay, we'll go ahead and call the City of Peru Common Council meeting for November 5th, 2018 to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Holland, followed by the invocation by Pastor Brent Wedding.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness and your mercy towards us. We pray that you'd bless our nation, bless this city, our city council, fill their hearts with wisdom and understanding. We pray for our school systems and our children, that you would keep them safe, and all of the citizens of this city. We pray that you'd pour out your blessings upon us, and we give you thanks and praise, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, roll call.
Holland.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Torrance.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Ally.
Here.
Langwell.
Here.
Krauskau.
Here.
Next, we have the reading and correcting of the journal.
Move, suspend the rules and dispense with the reading and correcting of the journal. Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, seconded by Councilman Ally, to dismiss the rules and dismiss the reading and correcting of the journal. On paper.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Next, we have communications.
We have a letter in your packet of information from Mary Costin, wanting to be reappointed to the Pre-Utilities Service Board. I think you've all received it, I assume, right?
Yeah.
Everybody got one?
Yep.
Okay. Ms. Costin's in the front row. Do you have any questions for her, anybody? I move we reappoint her.
I second that.
Any questions for anybody?
Nope.
I would like to comment that even though I used to attend meetings all the time when I was at the utility board, but I always maintained to get a letter sent with that from all the meetings. And I always look at the attendance, and Mary is on there, that they can share the time. So I think she does a good job. To do a good job, you gotta be there.
She's very involved, Amelia's for the city, and Mary asks questions and keeps them accountable.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Next, we have unfinished business. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
Next, we'll move on to unfinished business. All right. Ordinance 22, 2018.
Ordinance 22, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move, we adopt ordinance 22, 2018.
Second that.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Torrance, to adopt ordinance 22, 2018.
Well, it looks like they had, they're going to repair a hangar. Do we have anybody here from the airport?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. One chat.
Mark McGee, Board of Aviation President. Basically, these are funds that we generate from.
Can you get in front of the microphone so people, please?
These are funds from our hangar rent, so we're not asking for additional funding from the city. We have the old boyer hangar. It's in need of repair, and it was cheaper to repair it than to demolish it. It maintains, we put our courtesy car in there, and also our snow removal equipment. And we have a $500 circus fan donation pass through that was donated generously at the aviation open house day in August. And then we have $323 in fuel reimbursement for the same day. That's about it.
Third request, it says here, was $1,805. Is that correct, or is that not correct now? On the letter that Mr. Marburger sent to Tish, it says, third request is for a pass-through, fuel reimbursement for airplane rides, total of $1,805. Is that not a correct number now?
Number that I have a total on for ordinance 22 is 8,247, 7,424 for building repair, and 500 pass-through for the circus, and 323 for fuel reimbursement for open house.
Okay. I just had a copy of the email that was sent back on August 30th, so it's got an incorrect number in it, but...
May I jump in there for just a second? That actually, that was the original request, and so I included that in your packet, but Mr. Marburger did get ahold of me and say, and asked me to drop that one, that that one had gone through a pass-through and didn't need to be appropriated. So, your numbers are correct. That letter is out of date.
Okay.
Apologies.
I have the number she has.
Pardon?
I have the number you have.
Okay, great.
I have the two here, but I just had an email that had an incorrect number I was asking. I shredded that. I shredded that.
Any other questions?
Okay, roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 23, 2018.
Ordinance 23, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move, we adopt ordinance 23, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Guston, to adopt ordinance 23, 2018. I believe we have, Mr. Tid?
Yes, sir. Last meeting, we came and talked a little bit about the justification for this appropriation that we're taking out of Seated. This goes back to our negotiations with Progress Rail, which is now part of Caterpillar, about their expansion into the life road building and actually bringing equipment from their New York location. The proposal was that we would help them with the expense of moving equipment and helping them get out of a lease that they're currently at, at their facility over on H Street, for the tune of a $500,000 forgivable loan, 250,000 of which would be provided by the city, 250,000 would be provided by the county through an interlocal agreement between the city and the county. The county has already approved their share, and so we're here on second reading tonight for the council, the city council, to consider and hopefully approve their share. With that, subject to that approval, then we would propose that the mayor would go ahead, execute the interlocal agreement with the county, and then also execute a development agreement with Caterpillar Progress Rail, where they agree to a 14-year lease, they agree to new 20 new employees and retaining the current 104 that they have, and an investment of 1.5 million in new equipment. All of that, which would be reviewed annually by your incentive review committee. If they are found not in compliance, then they would basically have to pay back one year of that forgivable loan. And if you remember correctly, we were taking the $500,000, dividing it over eight years, which again, correct me if I'm wrong, comes out to about 62,005, I think, a year. So we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have, but would appreciate your favorable consideration to the appropriation.
So they're now definite that they will stay in Peru instead of maybe going to Muncie?
Yes. Subject to this.
I think all the progress out there's been done on that building, too, isn't it?
Yeah, there is, and that's one thing that's not associated in here, is that you would think with all the improvements that are to be done in and outside that building, that the assessed value, from a real property standpoint, would also increase.
Right.
Which is also going to increase tax revenue.
Yes.
Again, this is 14 years?
Their lease is with 14 years. The forgivable loan is over a period of eight.
Right, but their lease is 14, right?
Yeah, which, I mean, they could always break the lease, but that pretty much gives us a good idea that they're going to be in the community for another 14 years, and why wouldn't they? They've had good success here.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
And the motion passes. All right, moving on to new business, we have ordinance 24, 2018.
Ordinance 24, 2018, and ordinance for additional appropriations.
Move, we consider ordinance 24, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilman Holland, to consider ordinance 24, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Let's see, they have, this money is already in one fund for their, we're just moving it from pocket A to pocket B?
Yes.
All right, I'd like to move that we consider and adopt this ordinance in the same evening, so they can get the work done before the end of the year.
Second. It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Guston, to consider and adopt ordinance 24, 2018, in the same reading, in the same evening. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Move, we adopt ordinance 24, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Guston, to adopt ordinance 24, 2018.
Would you like to explain what we're, runway repairs, is that what we're doing?
Yes, sir. We basically have expansion joints that have failed over time. Here's a picture of a typical expansion. We have 37 of those joints, excuse me, 34. The runway is 75 feet across in width, and approximately 2,550 feet worth of ceiling to do. So, we also get inspected by NDOT, which should be in a few weeks, so we want to be sure that we're doing our due diligence and taking care of the runway properly. That's what the funds are for, and we'll be using local contractor.
There's some pretty big gaps in the pavement there.
Some of them are three and a half inches wide, and some of them are almost five inches deep. So, obviously, it's important to get that done before the freeze.
Which is Thursday.
Oops.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Next, we have ordinance 26, 2018.
Ordinance 26, 2018, and ordinance to rezone in the city of Peru.
Move, we consider ordinance 26, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Langwell, to consider ordinance 26, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes. Move, we adopt ordinance 26, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Guston, to adopt ordinance 26, 2018.
Okay, rezone in the city of Peru. Anybody here to address that?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's a lot out there by the Crossman Traxen Restaurant, right there in front of the movie theater. And we're wanting to rezone it.
I'm looking to put a shop slash office, personal use, full barn out there.
Okay.
It'll resemble the new Graper's building.
I'm selling a lot. It's going to be the developer, builder.
Could you state your name, please? State your name.
Rich Elbridge.
Rich Elbridge. Thank you. I know you.
Okay, so right now, it's zoned R1, and we want to rezone it to B3, right?
Yes, this matches the surrounding property, like Roxy and the Traxen area.
Those are currently all zone B3?
That's what I was told by Stephanie.
Okay, okay. And we had a meeting with the plan commission?
Yes, they approved it.
They approved it? Okay. Do we have any issues legally?
I would say Stephanie, when it comes to the rezoning and everything, Stephanie usually goes through that pretty well, and she knows, and it's already passed through the plan commission, so I think we're sound on that.
Okay, Dustin, thank you.
Yeah, I would say that the rezoning is congruent with the long-term plans for the Broadway landing plans that were developed for the north end, to expand business and take advantage of 24.
Okay. Any questions up here? Any of your demonstrators from the audience? No? Going once, going twice. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
There you go.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Next, we have ordinance 27, 2018.
Ordinance 27, 2018, and ordinance establishing salaries and wages of the Peru-Indiana civil city employees and appointees for the year of 2019.
Move, we consider ordinance 27, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, seconded by, did you get the second then? Okay. Seconded by Councilwoman Lee, to consider ordinance 27, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes. That'll come back next month.
Next, we have ordinance 28, 2018.
Ordinance 28, 2018, and ordinance establishing the 2019 annual salaries of all elected officials of the city of Peru, Indiana.
Move, we consider ordinance 28, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Lee, to consider ordinance 28, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Come back next month.
Okay, next, we have Resolution 13, 2018.
Resolution 13, 2018, a resolution of the common council of the city of Peru approving the request for American Stationery Company, Inc., for tax abatement.
Move, we consider Resolution 13, 2018.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Lee, to consider ordinance 13, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes. Move, we adopt Resolution 13, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Lee, to adopt Resolution 13, 2018.
Okay, Jim? Brooke? Brooke, Jim? Jim, Brooke?
Brooke's coming to do the heavy lifting.
Good evening. We were approached by American Stationery to see if you guys would consider another abatement for them. They are purchasing a new piece of equipment that is going to replace an existing piece of equipment. It's a $270,000 investment. It will maintain the 93 jobs they have now, and it says one-plus seasonal. I spoke to them the other day, and they've already hired 10 seasonal, so they did have a little increase there. We met with Phyllis and Cheryl and discussed this, and what we suggested was a five-year tax abatement at 60% each year. And you can see, I gave you this spreadsheet that shows you what their savings would be. Over the five-year time period, their savings would be $24,300, and they would be paying $16,200. Cheryl or Phyllis, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
They've been around a long time. They've always come through with everything that we've looked at, and we want to keep them around, and this will, we will.
Definitely will.
I feel the same way, and I just applaud them for, you know, being a good Peru business, you know, and I just hope that they continue to stay with us and keep improving. We're proud to have them.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Next, we have Resolution 14, 2018.
Resolution 14, 2018, a resolution of the common council of the city of Peru, Indiana, approving certain matters in connection with the consolidation and expansion of certain economic development areas.
Move, we consider. Resolution 14, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Langwell, to consider Resolution 14, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Move, we adopt Resolution 14, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau, and seconded by Councilwoman Guston, to adopt Resolution 14, 2018.
Jim?
Thanks again for your time. And I think, by the way, on American Stationery, I think they originated in the city in 1903?
Yeah, it was early 1900s.
Early 1900s, that they've been a part of this community, so thank you for your consideration. What I'm here to present tonight is Resolution 14, for your consideration and hopefully your approval. Basically, what this entails is it helps us provide a little bit more flexibility in the tax incremental financing districts that we currently have. Through your support, in the past, we established an economic development area, and a tax increment financing area within what we call US 24 Broadway area, which is basically the 60-plus acres that the city owns adjacent to US 24 and Broadway. Subsequently, we expanded that to include the downtown district, so that was one area. Also, through your approval, we established what we refer to as the West End, TIF, which basically is just that, is the west end of the city of Peru. Subsequently, we also expanded that area to include the CSX property, when the city was able to acquire that. Now, what we're asking you to consider is to consolidate, under one economic development plan, those two areas, and also to consider the establishment or expansion into the Peru Industrial Park as part of the overall consolidated plan for the city. What this does, it provides more flexibility in us to be able to support projects. Under state statutes, if you have revenue that is generated in a TIF, it can only basically support that TIF unless it is determined to be contiguous to other TIFs. So, as an example, when we did the US 24 Broadway and expanded that to the downtown, we used the public right-of-way on Broadway Street to be able to do that. When we did the West End TIF and expanded it to the CSX property, it was contiguous already to that property, so it wasn't a big deal. What we're doing now is we're providing that contiguous continuity amongst the TIF areas. From the Peru Industrial Park, if you approve it, we would use the US 24 public right-of-way that would connect to the Broadway, down through the city to the TIF in the downtown, and then would connect West End through the Wabash River as a public waterway, which is consistent with state taxes, or state tax law and is allowable. That way, what we can do then is be more flexible. If we have a need in the CSX property, and there is TIF revenue that is developed through the Peru Industrial Park, that those funds can be used to help support projects, whether it's the YMCA, whether it's public utilities, water, site development, those kind of things. Same way, if the West End generates tax incremental revenue, it can be used in the Broadway landing, and vice versa. So you're not constrained by where those tax revenues are generated from. So that is the whole purpose of this resolution that is before you tonight. Basically, what you would be saying in this resolution is that you support the development plan that was created by Makita for those economic development areas, and that you concur with our declaratory, Makita's declaratory resolution that was passed back on October the 10th. Following the process, and what this does, it first starts with a declaratory resolution by Makita, which was done on October the 10th. Then we bring that to the Plan Commission, and the Plan Commission considers the plan as well as the declaratory resolution, and they pass that just last week at their last meeting. Can't remember what date that was, but...
30th.
The 30th, thank you. A copy of their resolution is also, I believe, in your packet. Tonight, you're here to consider Resolution 14, which is the next step approval from the county council, or the city council, and then it goes back to my board. We're required to hold a public hearing, so that people can come and voice any concerns if they have over this, and then my board, after that public hearing, would consider what's called a conformatory resolution, meaning that they've taken everything into account, and hopefully going ahead and move forward on establishing the area according to the plan. There is a copy, I believe, of, hopefully, you got a copy of the plan and all the attachments, but basically, this is the map, I'm sorry, it's upside down. This is the map showing what we're talking about. The red area would be the Peru Industrial Park. The blue area is consistent with what is the US 2431 Broadway area in the downtown, and then the yellow area is consistent with the West End TIF, and the expansion to include the CSX property. Again, this, these are real property TIFs only, so a lot of TIFs that are done in other communities are basically not only real property, but they're personal property. Here, this is real property only. So, any new taxes generated from investors... So any new taxes generated from investment in equipment or those kind of things that are inside of these TIF areas go to the taxing units, which is subject to abatement, just like you approved tonight to American Stationery, but real property taxes are the only things that are collected in this TIF area. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, this basically just gives us more flexibility to be able to use TIF funds wherever the need is, and everything that we do as the city's redevelopment commission is run through the mayor's office and coordinated with the mayor's office in advance, so. That's a good idea, Jim.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
I wish you would have made a copy for her, I'd hate to see, you know, the different areas.
I did, it should be in your blue, should be in your blue packet.
Very, very, very first thing on the right side.
It's in the middle of that large.
Yeah, it's, should be in there, it's part of the redevelopment plan. There's a map like this, and then there's also by parcel listing, a description of each parcel, and then also is what we expect to occur in development.
Yeah, I saw it.
Over that, over that period.
I wonder if the council can see.
American Stationery.
I saw that before.
We all have one.
You get that. In all bestminds.
It's all, it's in there. Yep, we all have one.
I already knew, you know, my information.
Any further questions for Mr. Tim?
Thank you, Jim, I know this is complicated, and there's a lot of paperwork that goes into that, so thank you for your work and your staff.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Jim.
Any questions from the audience?
Holland.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, again. Next, we have resolution 15, 2018.
Resolution 15, 2018, a resolution of appropriation for the city of Indiana, of Peru, Indiana, 2018 budget.
Move we consider resolution 15, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau and second by Councilman Justin to consider resolution 15, 2018. Roll call.
Holland.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes. Move we adopt resolution 15, 2018.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Krauskau and second by Councilman Justin to adopt resolution 15, 2018.
How are we realizing a $105,000 reduction in bank? Bond is a bond, or just one another?
Well, no, actually, what happened here is our, the budget that we are trying to pass for 2018 is currently at the DLGF for review.
2019.
19, thank you very much. And it, we, what happened here with the debt payment is we paid a debt payment in December when it was due in January. We paid it in 2018, 17, we paid it in 2017 when we received it, but it was actually a 2018 payment. It was due in January, but we paid it as soon as we got it in December of 2017. So that will actually follow over, and what they're seeing is we actually spent $105,000, $105,250 less in 2018 than we should have, but that's because we jumped ahead a little bit and paid that bill in December when we received it instead of January. So to make everything square for the 2019 budget, we need to vote on a reduction in the 2018 budget. This was a request from Judy, who is our Department of Local Government Finance liaison.
Okay, so if we double paid in 2017, didn't that raise some red flags for last year?
Well, not necessarily. A red flag would be if a payment's not received, they'll send you a notice, so that's one of the ways that you would see a red flag, well, it was received. So we, you know, we didn't see anything out of the norm. Obviously, we have not had an audit yet, so it wasn't, we didn't find it in an audit. This is one of those things that it just, nothing happened except for it was paid about 15 days too early, which happened to be in a different year, so. The red flag was eventually caught by Judy at the DLGF, and she let me know, and asked me very nicely, which was very nice of her, to not do that again, to make sure to make the payments in January and June instead of as soon as I receive it. So point taken and noted, won't happen again.
So is that going to show, did that show as a, as a negative balance in, in 2017? Because you paid it twice? Is that going to show as a?
In 2017, it would have shown as a negative balance. In 2018, it would have been an overage, so this is how to fix it.
Okay. Okay, well, we've got to fix it, so we're not spending any more money, we're spending the same money we did, we're just timing, so. Any questions from the audience?
Nope.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, I have to go by my list or I get off, Lester. Holland.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Torrance.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Ally.
Yes.
Langwell.
Yes.
Krauskau.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. And I believe that is all that is on our agenda for tonight.
Anything further up here?
Chief Hawke. We had the fireman's ball, it was beautiful. You guys organized it very well.
Good job, like a lot of people do. Yeah, we had our 175th anniversary for our fire department for the city of Peru. We had a beautiful ball, put together by a lot of folks, I know Laurie was a big part of that, and it was absolutely beautiful. It was a great event to be at, so. Point down pole, I think we had with the baby, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah. I had not heard Ms. Mock's thing before, and that was a treat, no.
It was wonderful.
Mr. Justin, we haven't approved the salaries for next year yet, so if you want to make an adjustment in December before the, before the final, I suppose, right?
Actually, the only thing I want to know is if our attorney's getting any sleep.
Yes, thankfully, the baby sleeps throughout the night, so.
Wow.
We got lucky.
Yeah.
We have another one, probably will work out that way.
That's exactly how that goes.
Yeah.
Anything further from the assembled audience? Move adjourned. Calm, please. Aye.
Aye.